Good evening. Call to order for Watertown City Council meeting for March 4th of 2024. We will calm down up here, don't worry. Please rise while Hank Rosso, who is from Midwest Bible Camp, but also the Watertown Fire Rescue Chaplain, leads us in prayer.
Thank you. Please bow with me in prayer. Our God in heaven, we're so grateful to you tonight for your love for us. And we take it for granted oftentimes, such a fine community we live in. And a place that I would sometimes think of it's like the social sweet spot in our nation, where people still care about each other. We love our neighbors. We have leaders that are well-informed and compassionate about our needs. We thank you, oh God, for those who protect us through the night, our law enforcement, our first responders, the firefighters and paramedics and EMTs, each one of those that watch over us. We're so grateful. We often take such things for granted, but not at this moment, God. We say thank you. We lift up to you a special need right now for a dear friend of ours, Dan Shuddy and his wife, Michelle, as they're in a really tough spot right now. We pray that you administer to them that you'd help them know how much they're loved and supported, how we appreciate them, and that we would continue to lift them up in their time of need. We thank you for this time together, wisdom and understanding, and your presence in this place. We ask all these things and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Jerrance?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy? Absent. Tupper?
Here.
Bueller? Bueller. Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. With that said, just a note, Councilman Shuddy is off dealing with personal matter. And our prayers, obviously, tonight and throughout the entire event are going to be with him. And we thank you for that. So with that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are now on open forum. If there is anyone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. Mr. Mullen.
I'm Mullen. I live at 1192 Fourth Street. And all of the council members received an email from me today. Amanda, I'm sorry, I didn't send it to you. There's been a lot of discussion, not just on the street, but around town, about why it is that we would narrow a street in a snow climate. Now, I'm not an engineer. My undergraduate was physics and math, so. But from what I've been able to gather, it's going, the road is going to be narrowed by approximately six feet, which people are going, "Why?" And I just bring it to you. I don't need to talk anymore.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mullen. Had mentioned to you briefly when we talked prior to this, so what we will do is we will keep that and I'm sure we'll bring that up in old business at the end of the meeting. And that is just to protect the integrity of open forum, because when we cannot control the item that comes forward, we want to be able to control at least the meeting that happens after the open forum. With that, chair will enter, chair will break from protocol ever so slightly to allow City Manager Mack to say some very exciting things.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to have Captain Kirk Ellis come forward. Some of you may have seen this news, but Captain Ellis was presented an award on behalf of Operation Underground Railroad last week. Captain Ellis and the Watertown Police Department Detective Unit have done some truly amazing work in the areas of human trafficking, child sexual assault, and child exploitation. One of our biggest external partners, the Operation Underground Railroad, recognized Captain Ellis's efforts with the Fiat Justita Award. Operation Underground Railroad is an organization whose work spans the globe to assist law enforcement in matters related to child exploitation and human trafficking. Over the years, Captain Ellis and Operation Underground Railroad have worked closely together on a great number of cases and projects. The Latin phrase Fiat Justita is the name of the award and on the plaque in the, on the plaque. And it translates to let justice be done. So congratulations, Captain Ellis, and thank you for your efforts and to your team at Water Conference.
Captain, if you would like to say something about some of your efforts, you sure can. I, I just, I wouldn't mind if you mention, I mean, human trafficking is real in South Dakota and also in Watertown. And to think that this is only something you see elsewhere or in the movies is not completely accurate. So I would like you to take this opportunity to tell a little bit about what you did, but also what, why you had to do it.
Sure. So human trafficking is, comes in a lot of different shapes and, and what, what have you across the nation and the world. So what we primarily see and what we work with when it comes to here in South Dakota or locally is the efforts of the Criminal Investigation Division are those cases that involve individuals seeking people of underage and that type of thing. So it's not bringing people from other areas of the world and it is more so the, the environment of underage people being taken advantage of locally. So that is what we worked with. So and part of that and part of the reason I got this is that Watertown has a federal task force officer in the CID, Jamie Bierke, that is our first ever federal task force officer that works with HSI down in Sioux Falls. It specifically related to crimes against children. So that's part of the award as well, is that we made that happen here locally.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work on that.
Mayor.
Councilman?
I just want to thank the whole police department for everything they do to help make our community a safe place to live and raise a family and work and, and especially things like this. I mean, we don't hear a lot about it in a little town of Watertown, South Dakota, but it is true. It happens, unfortunately. I thank the whole police department for your efforts.
Thank you. City Manager Mack, you have another announcement.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to introduce you all to Kelly Fritz. Kelly is our new Public Information Officer. She started her duties on Friday. She's housed here at City Hall. She comes to us from the Village of Harmony Hill. She's got about 10 years' experience in communications and marketing. And we are very excited to have her as part of our team and working not just with staff, but with you all in the council to enhance and improve communications and tell the story of the work that the city is doing. So why don't you come and introduce yourself briefly? And welcome. We're glad to have you.
Just make sure the green light is on, on that microphone. Tell us just a little bit about yourself.
All right, a little bit about myself. Hmm. Like Amanda said, I went to school at Minnesota State Mankato. I graduated with a degree in communications and marketing. And I'm just really excited to be here at the city of Watertown. Everyone is very genuinely nice and help improve communication and transparency. And it's going to be really exciting. Thanks for having me.
All right. Thank you very much, Kelly. With that, okay, with that, we're on to item 9A. An approval of a bid award for the 2024 PMPA Asphalt Mill and Overlay and Large Project, project number 2402 to Dunick Incorporated, in the amount of roughly $2,600,000. Public Works Director Heath Von I, tell us more.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So this is a bid award for annual mill and overlay project. And what we've done the last couple of years now is combined what we call the large patch project with the mill and overlay, because the nature of the work is often fairly similar. So trying to gain some economy of scale in this, the way we package this particular bid, by putting them together. As you'll see in the council packet, in the summary, that we've got, I think I counted, over 30 locations of streets throughout town that'll be receiving either mill and overlay or large patch work through this contract. Dunick was the low bid on this particular bid advertisement that went out. And in this particular instance, we are under budget, which is good, and to the tune of about $430,000. Now, what we anticipate doing with that excess money is seeing how the other remaining street construction projects come in for bids here throughout the bid season. And likely we'll still have some of this left over where we could change order and additional work at other locations throughout town that are of need. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Jerrance, seconded by Councilman Peters. Open it up for questions and comments, council. Councilman Jerrance.
Will the public be able to see the list of projects on the city website? I know that can be kind of exciting or not exciting based on what side of the fence you're on.
Yes, Mayor, Councilman, that would be the intent to post this list of project locations on the website, if it's not already, but we'll, we'll look at doing that or ensuring that it is up.
Councilman Peters?
Quick question. Do they get notified by mail? No?
No. No, they do not. We're not obligated to provide any notifications. Typically, any project notifications come from the statutory requirement, like in instances of a rezone or development work like that, or a formal assessment where state statutes would trigger property owner notification. We do on reconstructions, because it's more intrusive to the neighborhood, where we're tearing out the whole road and shutting things down for a long period of time, we do provide notification to those homeowners. And it's usually in an effort to get contact information back from them, so we can keep in communication with them throughout the progress of the work. These mill and overlays and large patches are pretty well, you're in and out of those neighborhoods fairly less intrusively as a reconstruct, and so we don't send formal notifications to them.
Councilman Tupper?
Mr. Von I, so if these other bids come in on the reconstruct, I think we're probably talking the 12th Avenue one you're talking about that we haven't got?
That's one of them. Yes.
So if they come in under budget, is your anticipation to take this extra $400,000 and move on to some other projects also?
Yeah, we would, I would communicate through Manager Mack on, you know, whether we want to revisit any discussion at the council level, or depending on how much is left over in this year's budget and where to allocate those funds. It's likely we'd present some kind of a game plan to likely change order in more mill and overlay locations, because you can do that pretty seamlessly within this contract and not have to open a, a large can of worms by ripping into a whole new street on another reconstruct. So it's usually pretty seamless to just change order in more mill and overlay locations.
You just use our pavement management plan to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Jerrance?
Hi.
Peters?
Hi.
Tupper?
Hi.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9B is an approval of a bid award for the 2024 Crack Sealing and Seal Coating, project number 2406, to Asphalt Preservation Company Incorporated, in the amount of $515,000. Assistant City Manager Von I?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, another routine bid award. We like to put these on the regular agenda just to help share with the community some of the locations of the work being done. This is no different than the previous item, except this work is specific to our crack sealing and seal coating, which is also known as a chip seal. But we put a fog seal on top of that. We've gone to a new practice now where it gives a little better finished product than our old traditional chip seal that the community's maybe seen over the years. We've been doing the fog seal component now for, I think, two or three years, and it's been working very well. It does cost a little bit more, but we feel it gives us a lot better finished product. So that's what this is. It's this crack sealing and preparation for the chip sealing and fog seal that goes on top of that. There are, again, a list of locations in the council packet that show which streets will be worked on throughout the city. And this bid came in a little bit under budget, but a lot tighter than the last item. So we're good to go as far as the budget is concerned. We'll stand by for questions.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Let's open it up for comments and questions. Councilman Tupper?
Just one quick question. I know the fog seal has been in, been very, very successful. Do we fog seal everything that we, chip seal?
Correct. That has been our practice here as of lately.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? Director Von I, one question. Are we just lucky that both of these have come in under budget? Or is it, are we experiencing a different bid climate?
It might be a combination of both. The?
I mean, don't look a gift horse in the mouth, obviously, but just curious.
It's probably a combination of both. You know, it's, it's how we're estimating. How we estimate can vary from year to year based on, typically, we're looking at the history of bids. And so there's a lot of guesswork that goes into those estimates, because you don't know today how they could change versus the history of bidding that you've got in front of you. So there's still a lot of guesswork and subjectivity to that whole process, so. But yeah, we are fortunate that they both came under.
I think it's just because everyone wants to be here in Watertown. So we'll go with that. Any further questions or comments? Motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Jerrance?
Hi.
Peters?
Hi.
Tupper?
Hi.
Bueller? Danforth?
Hi.
Holene?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item 11A, a second reading of ordinance number 24-01, amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for a portion of Outlet X, Block 8 of Valley View 4th Edition, from R1 to R2, single-family attached residential district. So we will go to either our Public Works Director Von I or our Community Development Manager, Randy Hutton, so.
Thank you, Mayor. So this, this is the second reading, this rezone. It's in a portion of the Valley View subdivision from the 4th Edition. And as that development has continued to progress, they've, of course, found a need to roll with some of the demands out there. And so that's what this rezone essentially amounts to. The need or the demand for some of the R2, single-family attached residential district has been prevalent. So the rezoning a portion of, of this 4th Edition from R1 to R2. I've got a map that I've shared to teams that I'll scroll down to here. And this black hashed area is the area to be rezoned from R1 to R2. Now, there is a subsequent action item later on in the meeting here that will establish a plat of this area and make it part of Valley View, Valley View Edition, Valley View 5th Edition, excuse me. But right now, the action item in front of you is to rezone this portion from R1 to R2. I believe it passed unanimously from the Planning Commission recommending approval to the council. You can see in the current zoning map that it will be adjacent to existing R2 zoning. And, and then across the street would be transitioned back to R1 zoning, as shown in a lighter yellow area on this map here. With that, I'll stand by for any questions on this rezone.
All right. Thank you. Manager Hutton, do you have anything to add at this time? All right. I will open up a public hearing. Is there anyone who, here who would like to testify on this item? Anyone online? I'll close the public hearing and go to council action. Can I get a motion to approve the amending of the zoning map? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Peters. Open it up for discussion, council. Councilman Tupper?
Assistant City Manager Von I, that did come with a unanimous decision on the planning commission, if I remember right?
Yeah, says my recollection. Let me quick-ski in the notes here. Yeah, so by the vote, seven to zero. Planning Commission recommended approval February 8th.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion will be to approve the amending of the zoning map. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Jerrance?
Hi.
Peters?
Hi.
Tupper?
Hi.
Bueller?
Hi.
Danforth?
Hi.
Holene?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 11B is Prairie Haven Annexation, 1st Edition Annexation and Zoning. We have two items here. We will discuss them both at the same time, but take separate action on them. First item is approval of a resolution initiating the annexation of the tract of land contiguous to the city of Watertown, known as Prairie Haven Annexation 1st Edition. Item 2 will be the second reading of an ordinance establishing the zoning designation of R1C at that location. Assistant City Manager Von I, please tell us more about this one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I will pull up the map for reference for this area. Shared that to teams. So the Prairie Haven Annexation and zoning relates to, of course, Prairie Haven subdivision, which is a lot larger area that was concept and prelim planned following the subdivision regulations of Title 24 and city ordinance. This is the area out there off the southwest corner of the airport. You can see in the aerial underlayment on this particular map that I've got pulled up. The first phase of this has already been initiated and a lot of the infrastructure's in and several houses have already began to be built. And that too is zoned R1C. So this blue outlined area is the portion in question here this evening that you'd be taking action on to go ahead and annex and subsequently zone to this similar R1C single-family residential. It's a higher-density residential that it allows for with that C designation in it. As you know, this area is targeted to have, whether you call it affordable housing or workforce housing, or whatever catchphrase you'd like to use these days, that's kind of the target intent of this subdivision, hence the R1C zoning. I believe in this first phase, they're, they're targeting houses or homes being sold that are under $300,000. Just sharing that information as an FYI, really not germane to the action in front of you, but just adds context to what the intent is of the subdivision here. These streets have all been, and infrastructures have all been reviewed by staff through the design review team meeting. So this phase of development meets all the subdivision regulations and the engineering design standards. And the construction plans have been approved and the associated development agreement would come with, at the time of plating, which maybe I spoke a little too early there. Those, those next steps have to happen. You have those final reviews and approvals. So that plat will come forward at a future date after tonight's annexation and initial zoning. But first and foremost, of course, before you tonight, is the annexation and the, the second reading of the rezone.
All right. Thank you very much. So we have two separate actions to take. I am going to allow the leniency of testifying on both at the same time as they are at the same location. And I will open up a public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. I'm going to allow council the same leniency that I would have the public to speak to both, but I do need a motion to approve the resolution, so we can be, so we can begin talking about them. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Comments and questions, council? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on it. First of all, this development, it's always easier for us to make these changes to zoning requests while it's being and in advance of actual buildings being there. It's always hard to rezone that once things are in place, especially if we're going downward per se and of like from R1 to R2. So it's good to see the, the applicant doing that, the developer doing that. I think that's very beneficial for our community. The other thing is, this, years ago, we had, came up with the, the R2A. And I believe, Mr. Von I, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that allows for smaller lots, correct? I believe is the gist of it, or side yards, or whatever it is.
It, it does, and I believe the art, the intent of the R2A had to do with existing developed areas.
Right.
Primarily, not as much new, new development.
But the logic of what we did is important, because of, there's so much talk about affordable housing and, and the number that was shared as to what they hope to be able to do. I mean, it's almost appalling to see those as what's called affordable housing anymore. So we've got to be able to do whatever we can from our standpoint. And it's good to see the developers doing this as well, to, to try to work towards something that is more affordable. And so I commend the developer on this and moving in this direction. I think it'll be a good thing for that area and a good thing for Watertown.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, we'll take action on item 1, which is an approval of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Jerrance?
Hi.
Peters?
Hi.
Tupper?
Hi.
Bueller? Danforth?
Hi.
Holene?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 2 is a sec, is the second reading of the ordinance establishing the zoning designation of R1C, single, or compact, single-family residential district for the property known as Prairie Haven Annexation 1st Edition. I do need to have a motion to accept that zoning designation. Motion made by Councilman Peters. Need a second? Second by Councilman Tupper. I'll put it up for comments and questions. Hearing none, we're just going to do a voice vote. All those in favor of the zoning designation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to item C, a second reading of the ordinance, number 24-03, amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for lots 15 through 18, Block 7 of Davelin's Edition, from I-1 Light Industrial to C-3 Highway Commercial District. Assistant, Assistant City Manager Von I, please tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a rezone of an area that's mostly developed. I'll pull up the map here for reference here in a second. This one did come with a split vote recommendation from the Planning Commission, a vote of six to one. They did recommend approval at their February 8th meeting. And again, as you indicated in the title, this is the second reading of this rezone, where the council saw it as the initial reading here at the last council meeting. But with that, I'll pull up the map to find that's the easiest way to explain where this is happening. So as shared to teams, the intersection of Highway 81 and 212 here is shown on this map. And just southeasterly of that, along 10th Avenue, is the property in question. So it's across the street from 212, Studio 212, 212 Studios. I forget the order that name, the building goes in. But it's across the street from there, and that's the area they're desiring to rezone from I-1 to C-3 zoning designation. And with that, I'll, I'll stand by for any questions, really.
Thank you very much. I will open up a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on this item? I know that there's people here for this item. If you'd like to say something just to, that you're in favor, you sure can. Okay. I'll close the public hearing and open it up for council action. Do I have a motion to approve the amending of the zoning map? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Jerrance. So open it up for questions and comments. Councilman Tupper?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we all received an email from an individual today with some concerns on this. And I'm going to go back to, I believe they said 2018 or 19, when Dakota Gold was in a industrial district that, that they were asked to find a different location, basically. location, basically. Mr. Von I, can you tell me from Highway 212, or excuse me, Highway 81, all the way over to this, all those lots are non-conforming right now, or however I want to put it? There are all...
Legal non-conforming.
Legal non-conforming, yes. I guess that's the way I wanted to put it. Because if you look at from 81 all the way over to that building, they should all be in a C1 or C- commercial highway. There's not a business there that wouldn't fit into that.
Yes, I give a little bit of pause here without looking specifically into that. Some of these uses may be permitted in the I-1. I wouldn't know without checking each one off.
But they'd also fall in a...
Very likely would fall into a C3 type of use as well, if that's what you're asking.
Yep.
It's likely, I would say. I can't say with certainty, though.
Well, looking at all those businesses, I know with certainty that they probably would, other than maybe the one that you have in question. But the only one that would maybe fall into the industrial would be the one directly to the east of that. So it's kind of like we haven't did our work along the way when that all got developed down there, because it should have all been turned into a C3. Yeah, I think it's a little different from where they were located when they were asked to move. That was all industrial at that time.
Councilman, is that a comment or a question?
I guess a comment.
Okay. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, Mr. Tupper, I got the same emails. I'm sure we all did. And I think it's important. There was a, there was sharing within that email regarding what the possible use of this location would be if it was rezoned. And, you know, that's, that really isn't our responsibility. That's the owner and whoever builds it and whoever decides to put a bill, or a business there, that's their decision to make. I think this, this area has, over the years, I think it will continue to just gradually transition more towards a C3 environment than industrial environment. I don't think it's a wrong fit. I think it's an area where it could be either one and be done effectively. I don't think there's a danger issue here. It's not like we have heavy industrial. So I, I think it's a good fit for where it's at and for the need. And again, I don't think there's any, any issues in regards to safety. And there might be a preference on people that may or may not want to go to this particular business, but that is their choice, not ours at that point.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Tupper? Would anyone like to speak before Councilman Tupper speaks a second time? Councilman Tupper?
May I ask a question of Mr. Brandreth?
Sure.
Any plan commission...
Come forward and please identify yourself. He who would not testify at public hearing.
Not unless he's asked, so.
Hi, Brian Brandreth.
I know during the Plan Commission Board of Adjustments meeting, it was brought up the ingress and egress, that it only has one right now, and it was asked if you'd be willing to put in two. Has that been, any more done with that, or?
Nothing, nothing's been done there. We certainly could.
You know, their issue there was with traffic coming in and out in the same driveway. I guess that would be, I guess, my wish, but I guess it's not the wish of the city or the council, but that would be totally up to you, but I think it'd be a good idea, so.
I think it's realistic to think that could happen. We're going to have to pour some concrete there anyway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Director Von I?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilman Tupper, to that point, the only thing I would add to that, if you want a staff to pursue administering something like that, I'd certainly want to check that off against our engineering design standards and the spacing between accesses. And I was not at that planning commission meeting, so wasn't able to talk with them about access control, but would certainly like to put that into the realm of the city engineering office that would help to assist in facilitating and managing that, making sure it is an appropriate ask, and that we're not putting something on to the developer that would not meet our engineering design standards or be in favor of the transportation network as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Von I.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Brandreth?
If, in fact, the city decided it wasn't a good idea to put another approach in there, would that, would that have any effect on, oh, we can't do what we want to do because there's not two entrances? Or that's just kind of a bonus entrance, make it nicer for everybody, but it wouldn't be a requirement?
As the question came up unexpected, I can, because I know that you're basically asking for clarification upon what Councilman Tupper said, then I will allow the leniency. Director Von I, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, I guess from staff's perspective, we wouldn't see any issue with them proceeding with a use as permitted in the C3 zoning district, and then administering the engineering design standards appropriately.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Brandreth, that wasn't a, I guess it wasn't a formal request. It was a question by me that, you know, I'm just following up on what was brought up during the Plan Commission meeting. So I would like to see, but like I say, it wouldn't be a request to the council, so.
No, I understand. I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
I would like to, Councilman Danforth dealt with this, I think, very well, but I would just like to ask one question. In regard to the potential safety of youngsters going to a business that could be there, that is the decision of the business. That's not the decision of the city as to whether or not it goes there. But I was wondering, is there any sort of safety data between I, industrial and commercial, and C3? To me, it would seem like C3 would be safer if there is actually standards. I don't know. And I'm not asking if you know a study right off the top of your head or anything. It was just more out of curiosity.
Mayor, I think if I follow your question accurately, I think it would just be inherent to the uses that are permitted or conditional in those different zoning districts that would lead one to say, yes, this is a safer zoning district to be in than the I-1. I don't know if that's completely answering.
That's plenty fine. I just wanted to make sure that the person who had contacted the council took that time had, at least what I think, the questions that they had in there asked and answered. Any further comments or questions? All right. The motion is to approve the amending of the zoning map. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Tupper? Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're on to item 12A, an approval of a resolution for the plat of Valley View Fifth Edition to the municipality of Watertown, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement. We'll go to Assistant City Manager Von I, or City Manager Mack. Do you want to take it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is related to the aforementioned rezone of a portion of what was Valley View Fourth Edition. And this is plating that area along with the rest of what's going to be known as Valley View Fifth Edition. Again, I'll pull up a map for reference, along with a copy of the plat. So this area outlined in red is what's being proposed to be platted. This area does have the construction plans approved, the development agreement related to the public improvements that are associated with this plat is also part of this action here tonight. You're approving the plat and the development agreement. And again, the southerly lots here will be a little bit more densely spaced to accommodate for that R2 zoning. And then the northerly and westerly lots along this portion of the subdivision will be single-family residential. A copy of the actual plat is also included in the council packet, and will look just like this. Of course, we have the, all the appropriate designated right-of-way easements, everything of that nature that's required of a plat. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. Motion is to approve the resolution and to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement. So chair will entertain a motion for those two, but one motion. Motion made by Councilman Tupper? Seconded by Councilman Bueller. Comments and questions? Anything, council? All right. Hearing none, we'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor of the, of the resolution and the authorization, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12B is an approval of a resolution requesting the South Dakota Department of Transportation hire Civil Design Incorporated to perform the 2024 Bridge Inspection Services for the city of Watertown. Director Von I, please tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a pretty routine action item, but it helps to emphasize or advertise the fact that we're performing annual bridge inspections through the state, the South Dakota DOT Bridge Inspection Program. Through that program annually, the city of Watertown has 11 structures that were required to be inspected throughout the, within the city limits, within the city's jurisdiction. In 2024, we're slated to have six of those 11 inspected. And also part of that DOT program, they have a list of approved structural engineer consultants that they are authorized to perform this work under the DOT's program. We, as staff, are recommending to hire Civil Design Incorporated, CDI, is out of Brookings, South Dakota. They performed these for us the last two seasons, yeah, two seasons. And we, as staff, recommend go ahead and proceeding with them, again, through another, at least another full cycle of all 11 structures, before we would want to mix it up with another consultant. But they've been doing great work for us. Monetary impact on this is fairly nominal. The bridge inspection cost is roughly eight grand, $8,000. And we only pay a small portion of that, so $1,600 is budgeted in our operating costs for this year to perform this work. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Jerrance, seconded by Councilman Peters. Comments or questions? Director Von I?
Also available for the council or the public, I'll quick share this to teams. We do have a map included in the council packet that shows the highlighted locations of all the structures that will be inspected here in 2024. And it's, it's a map typical to this same program every year. So it's easy to track all 11 of those structures and how they're, how they're inspected every other year. Sharing that for information purposes.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, since there was no questions, we'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things I have, and Mayor, I believe you may have been asked fairly recently for us to consider the use of golf carts on public streets. And I promised that I would bring that up and ask how, if that will, and how that will be considered. Might be something that, that staff would do some prep work on and then bring back to the council for at least an understanding and consideration.
City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Danforth. It is something that has been brought to our attention a couple of different times. I believe next week, we have an internal staff meeting with Chief Toomey about this, so we can provide any additional information. The law has recently changed, which would allow for golf courts, golf carts, excuse me, on roadways, but I think there, we want to thoroughly vet that before we recommend any changes. So we can bring some information back in the next few weeks to you all.
Yes, thank you. And City Manager Mack, I know we did not discuss this, but you were in on an email that I had sent to the chief last week, and the chief did acknowledge that that topic had come up and that he would be glad to look at it. He was on vacation last week. Councilman Danforth, the floor is still yours. Councilman Tupper?
I got that email about a year ago, too, Mike. And here's, excuse me, Councilman Danforth. I've looked into it a little bit. If, the first thing, when you curl on a golf cart and you look at the safety label that's right on the steering wheel, it says federally it's not safe, or, you know, by federal standards, it's not safe to drive on a city street. So, you know, that's, that's a heartache, I guess, I got with it. I know there's a lot of people that do want to allow it, and I'll go along with the conversation on it. But, I mean, if it's not federally approved for use on the city street, I don't know how we could really wholeheartedly say that we should allow it. So that's my opinion on it, so.
Thank you. Any further comments on the, any announcements? Sydney Manager, any report? There is a reason to go into executive session for a contractual... Oh, yes, sorry, sorry. I didn't, yeah, where is our old business? So we'll just go, other business. I would like to return to the topic that Mr. Mullen brought up in regard to 12th Avenue. Do we, Director Von I, I would go to you. The question was, it was more of a conversation, but how narrow, is the street being narrowed? How much of the street, how, like, what length of the street, and how much is it being narrowed?
Yes, absolutely, Mayor. I can help talk through some of the points there. I've just requested of staff to get me the exact details on the exact widths and length of those widths for those varying street sections. What we've got on the 12th Avenue project is, is just that. We've got, for that whole duration of that project, which I think is, is it nine or 10 blocks, Justin?
10 blocks.
At least three different street widths. And what staff's hoping to accomplish is a uniform street width along that whole 10-block section, for obvious reasons. It just helps with, you know, maintenance and the traffic flow. There's no confusion on the varying widths as you travel a street route. It's not uncommon to what we've performed on other street reconstruct like 10th Avenue, where, you know, where we created one uniform street width for that entire stretch. I believe the current street widths out there vary anywhere from 34 feet, although up to 40 feet. And so what staff have done in their design have accounted for, and in the industry, we would call it right sizing of the street. And how that happens over time is the different subdivisions came in, or different phases of subdivisions came in in past decades, where one subdivision was 30-some feet wide, 32, 34, 36. And then the subsequent phase that butts up to it came in some years later and ends up being 38 or 40 feet wide. So with the information I've requested from staff, I'd hope to better quantify exactly what's being changed, and then I can share that out through the city manager for the council's information and discuss any further as necessary.
Thank you very much. Let's stay on this topic. Councilman Peters, it is your ward.
Just real quick, if I could, Director Von I, are we going to share some plans up on the screen next council meeting, just about what, what the overall plan is with the sidewalks now being removed? Is that, is that on the agenda? I don't remember when it's coming back. I guess what I'm...
Assume it would be when we bring the bid award.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at is a lot of people have reached out, saying, well, what is the plan? Can we just use a set of plans? And I don't know if it would be appropriate to have that discussion in the next council meeting when it's up, but it sounds like when the bid comes in would be more appropriate.
Yeah, to that point, just off the cuff here, Councilman Peters, I would say that maybe that's something we'd want to prepare for the next work session meeting. Or wait, where are we at in the month? We do have a work session next week, correct? So I would say that probably the most beneficial time to bring that information forward.
I think, I would agree. I just had a courtesy for these Ward B folks.
I will break with protocol unless council has an objection. Mr. Mullen, would you like to add anything before we leave the topic?
Thank you. Really, the, I see the differences in the width. What, what I'm hearing from talking with people is that it's the impression that it's going to be narrowed down to what it was. it's the impression that it's going to be narrowed down to what it was when the sidewalk was going to be put in and then the four-foot, whatever you call it, that buffer area.
Boulevard.
Yeah, boulevard, thank you. And at the last council meeting, that just, it added up to basically six feet that was going to have to be taken off of the street. People are concerned with narrowing the street that far. Having walked up and down, I see the, you know, you've got a foot here difference and another foot here on the blocks. It makes perfect sense to make them straight to me. But it's that big chunk that, and it comes back again to, if you're going to narrow a street majorly, why do it in, in an area where we have lots of snow? That's basically what I'm hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Council, we can stay on this topic if anyone else has anything to add. Councilman Tupper?
Mr. Von I, is this only part of it's getting narrowed or is some of it actually getting widened? Or you say the different widths that are in that street right now?
Councilman Tupper, that's the information that I, I just don't have in front of me here tonight to talk very intelligently about, but as soon as I have that, I'll have a better handle on what the exact current and promote, proposed dimensions are.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Councilman Danforth?
You know, if we're going to have this discussion as part of a, a work session, I think one thing we should probably take a look at is to review our policy and such as it relates to sidewalks in these older neighborhood areas. I don't question our policy and our, our design standards and what our requirements are for sidewalks in new areas. I think that's a good thing. But when we, when we get into these, you know, these neighborhoods that they have all these varying street widths and, and they're established, they, most of them, in most cases, don't have a lot of real lengthy, high-traffic-through-type streets. I think we have to talk about the logic of, of applying sidewalks in those areas. At least, you know, and part of that discussion should be, do we really need them on both sides versus coming up with a plan that said if we feel we need to have sidewalks, maybe we go on one side or the other. But, but I do think that the whole sidewalk issue should at least be talked about a little bit and understood. I was surprised that we actually had that, that Mr. Mack had stated that we have the policy from 2007. I was never aware of that. So that was good information to learn, so. So I think that should be part of that discussion, Mayor, if we could.
I would second that, and I know that I would not be alone in wanting to discuss that. Any further discussion on this 12th Avenue or anything else, council? Councilman Danforth?
Yep, I'm back, Mayor. Well, on the topic of roads and such, about a week or so ago, I actually had a, an incident that I was familiar with on 14th Avenue Northeast and from 19th Street to the east. And that's where we have that half-road for, well, quite a ways. Farther is it goes farther to the, to the east, I think we have a full-width road. If you recall, when we were going through all of our discussions on that PUD development, what we said was we would monitor and watch the, the traffic activity and look at speeds and such. And that's coming right along, probably going to open up this coming summer, the way it looks. At least part of it is, anyway. You know, we have that, we call it a half-road. It's about two-thirds of a road. I believe that the speed limit there might be 35, maybe, which for a half-road seems really silly, seems inappropriate in regards to speed. There's a lot of parking on that as you get farther to the east on the, on the south side of that road, which really creates a safety issue with people coming in and out of streets and in driveways. So that, I think, is another one that needs to get looked at sooner than later to see if there's any merit in making some type of changes in our requirements, whether that be speed or whether that be parking on that road, whatever it is. But it, it is problematic. And so not, again, not sure how that all gets handled. I believe she, Toomey, said that he would be speaking with Amanda and with the, another person.
Yeah, we have a traffic safety committee.
Yep, and so hopefully that gets done and gets looked at. So, but I wanted to bring that up.
I can't remember if they meet monthly or every other month, but I will make sure this is on their next agenda.
Yep. I bring that up because it, it is something that I wanted to bring up a while ago and I forgot about it and then it became an issue. But we also, we need to go back to the commitment that we made to the people in that area that we would revisit it as things progressed. Granted, it's not open yet, but that's not too far away and that will bring a lot more traffic to that spot, so. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Well, I guess we're back on item 13, so any other mention in the council? Okay. City Manager, one more chance at a report? All right. As I began stating, we do have cause to go into executive session to discuss contractual issues. We will not be taking action when we come out, or none is expected. So Chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion made by Councilman Jerrance, seconded by Councilman Danforth. So, thank you. I will say goodnight to you now. We will officially adjourn when we're out of executive session, but goodnight.